The thirty-eight a month goes to the Retirement Benevolent Fund.
Woo-hoo, I guess I get an increase.
Scott, can you get?
So the thirty-eight dollars and thirteen cents.
For a year increase.
Is annual.
Annual.
Oh, that's the annual. Where's the three hundred and seventy-three twenty-five fit in then?
That's already there. That's part of, that three seventy-five is the total for the year.
Of that, yeah, that's what I figured, okay. Well, thank you, Board, for your time. You've answered my questions, and I'll brace myself for next year, hoping for the better.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
All right, Tony, you're on. Tony, we've already opened the public hearing. We've had one presentation from one resident, and we're ready to recognize a second resident to come and talk about the fiscal year sixteen budget. Are there any, is there another resident, or two or three that would want to talk to us?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any, no one? As they say in the auction, going once, going twice, going three times. And it is my pleasure to then end, call an end to the public hearing on the fiscal year sixteen budget. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, the next item on the agenda is for the adoption of the Annual Appropriation Resolution Gateway Services relating to the annual appropriations and adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning in October first fifteen and ending September thirtieth sixteen. I'd like to have a motion to adopt the budget that was last discussed by the Board.
So moved.
We have a motion to second?
Second.
And we have a second. Is there conversation that we haven't heard before that we need to hear on the adoption of the budget? Rod?
Yeah, I want to understand, this is my first time go around on the Board. Am I approving, if I vote for this, am I approving the budget, or am I approving the, just the resolution? Or am I approving the numbers?
We're approving the budget as it was last discussed by the Board with a ten-plus percent increase. And once the budget is adopted, then there will be a resolution offered to set the assessment.
Okay, I'd like to make some comments for the record.
Please.
Winding back to two thousand and eleven, the assessment in that year was two hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And the assessment in two thousand and fifteen is three hundred and thirty-five dollars. So over that four-year period, the district increased the assessments forty-seven dollars. Over, on a percentage on two hundred and eighty-eight, that's a sixteen percent increase over four years, which is four percent a year. The proposal this year is ten point nine percent. And I think, first of all, that we have a burden as a Board to explain to residents when there's a double-digit increase why that is the case this particular year. And I don't think that we've made that case to the residents, which is one reason that I don't think it's a good idea to go to ten point nine percent. Second reason is, yes, we have rapidly depleting reserves, capital reserves. But the negative one hundred and twenty thousand dollars capital reserve in the general fund that we've always focused on in the last few months, it actually is not going to transpire. Having discussed with Stephen Blum, we're going to be quite a lot, maybe half a million dollars under spent on lake bank restoration. So instead of being negative one twenty, we're going to be probably positive three eighty on that basis. Also, we have a financial director here of Seven Trent who has recommended the eight percent figure by, in other words, we've, we discovered some new savings recently, which was the wetlands and the sheriff, which adds up to a hundred and five thousand savings. And the proposal that at least I made was to put fifty of that into reserves and fifty-five to reduce the assessments. And that fifty in reserves would increase the reserve to, from one fifty to two hundred thousand, which was Stephen's proposal in version three. However, as it stands, the ten point nine percent increase moves all of that hundred and five thousand into reserves. And in my opinion, we haven't made the case to the Board, the burden's upon us to do so. We haven't made the case to the residents, should I say, to do a double-digit increase this year. And I would prefer to go with the eight percent, and that's my position.
Thank you, sir. Gary, do you have any comments to make at this time?
No.
Pam?
No.
Margaret?
No.
All right, we have a, we have a motion on the floor in a second to adopt the budgets for the fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, including the ten point nine percent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Posed.
Four to one. Motion's carried. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the resolution of the Board of Supervisors imposing special assessments, certifying an assessment role, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date. This is Resolution two oh one five point oh eight, and is in conformance with the budget that we just adopted. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
There's a motion?
Second.
And we have a second. Any conversation?
Is Tony on the phone?
Yes, I think.
Tony?
Yes, sir.
This is Rod. Tony?
Yes, sir.
Tony, I voted no on the last resolution. Could you give me some guidance on this next resolution? Would that, would I, would that be in line with the last one? I'm not really sure how to operate on this one, on this second resolution.
This resolution.
The. Now I'm gonna have to wing it.
The short, the short answer to that is you can vote however. They're both, they're independent, so you're not conflicting.
I just wanted to understand what I'm actually voting on here.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, you are, this is strictly the assessment, so you're.
Yeah, but what am I voting on here? Can you explain it to me?
You're voting on establishing the assessment to support the budget that was just approved. So the, the assessment with the thirty-eight dollar, ten percent.
I hit the wrong button, Mr. Senior, I apologize.
Yeah, that'll cost you.
The ten percent.
That's a technology challenge. Yeah, so that second resolution is the resolution that levies and imposes the various assessments to fund the debt service and to levy the debt service assessments and the operation and maintenance special assessments consistent with the revenues anticipated from the assessment of, by virtue of the, you know, number of dollars per ERU in the adopted budget.
Okay, so voting on this resolution wouldn't be in conflict and voting against the last resolution?
No, it will not.
Thank you.
Any other questions about adopting the resolution, imposing the special assessments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Five zero. Okay. Next item of business is a street sign replacement, six D. I believe that's Mr. Connell's item.
You like that?
Page eighty-one on the agenda. Would you help us do this a little bit, please, Scott?
Certainly. Okay, Scott Connell, this is, I took bids on replacement of our street signs. This was a recommendation by the Road Turnover Committee. It's been in progress for a while. We were able to come out, their recommendation was to replace like signs within our sections of Griffin Drive and Gateway Boulevard and Commerce Lakes Drive West. And we developed a scope of services and detail, and went out, invited three bidders. As you see, two did respond. Unisource Sign Connection, they are manufacturer, and they are an installer. And in essence, we are replacing the same posts, the same sign. We bring them up to current standards. Some of our signs were put in twenty-five years ago. They're too small. They're to meet the current requirements.
U T L.
M U T C D. And municipal uniform traffic code device. Yes, thank you. And the requirements to comply with Lee County for the turnover, reflective and all those kinds of things. So we brought those up to date, and we are coming along with the same fluted posts, the decorative custom signs, and changing the names, updating all that. The only change that you'll see is going from that cream color that gets mildewy and ugly after twenty-five years to a hunter green to match our, our logo, the green color. That way, it'll, it'll look fresher for a longer period of time, I believe. So that's the recommendation before you, and they meet all the contract specs by Lee County and things.
I have some questions. Do other Board members want to go ahead? Please.
Thanks, Scott, for this. My initial remark to Cal was this, twenty-six thousand dollars for thirty-four signs is eight hundred dollars a sign, or thereabouts. That seemed a lot at first sight to me. I'm not a sign expert, except for election signs. So, which cost me five dollars each. But that's not the point.
Okay.
But we're talking about M U T C D signage, L C D O, L C D O T have to approve these, right? We're within that code.
They meet that requirement.
Have you, Lee County buy, they make, they fabricate their own signs. They buy the sheet metal from Piggybacking and Osceola County. Did you know that? And is there anything we could do, because we're doing, we're trying to meet L C D O T specs, could we, is there a way we could get them to fabricate our signs?
They don't make this custom sign.
They won't make our colors?
No, they use the standard Unistrut, standard sign, rectangul, rectangular post, or whatever they call that thing that you see out here, and just the metal.
Okay, stop signs.
Galvanloom and all that stuff, yeah.
Okay.
This is a custom decorative sign that we are replacing.
Okay, is two bids sufficient, do you think, to make, for you to be satisfied with all the best price?
From comparing prices in the past and industry standards, the roughly, the signs vary. Sometimes you have a stop sign with two street names. Sometimes you'll just have a speed limit sign, so it all varies. But your average of about seven hundred fifty, eight hundred dollars a sign is the going rate, and that's a removal and a replacement.
Yeah, get it.
And these are breakaway signs.
Okay, so you think that's a reasonable price?
I do.
Hey. Why didn't you ask if they have scrap value?
Well, you know what? I didn't want to take up too much time, but I will if you.
We'd be happy to collect them, and then we are going to do a procurement of a scrap company for our miscellaneous scrap that we collect through the years.
Good. Thank you.
And it should go to what fund? The cash proceeds?
Retirement Benevolent Fund.
Thank you.
Of old Board members?
Scott, I have two questions. Number one, are you sure that these signs are going to be the same ones that WCI is going to install on their portion of the road?
I think a better question is.
Please.
What is WCI going to install?
Well, don't you think it would be nice if the signs were all uniform?
Yes, sir, and I have shared this specification with them and with their engineer, Holmontez. And at a meeting we had several months ago with the Road Turnover Committee, with David Caldwell, we said we would, with Ed Tinklin Company, we said to WCI, would you please consider in your areas of the segments of the road to replace these signs with decorative signs as you installed originally? And they nodded that they would take it under consideration. I don't know the outcome yet. I am pushing this weekly.
I'd prefer not to move on this until we know precisely that WCI and our signs are going to be, if not identical, at least similar. And I also would like to see a visual of what the sign's going to look like in color.
Okay.
The same color as what we.
What if WCI refuses? We don't have a dog, a real dog in that fight. Well, don't you think that it would be nice if they were the same all throughout the community? Are you saying WCI is or isn't nice?
We, they did.
No, I think it's to the point.
In some of the discussions, they are required to put up the standard uniform sign. We, there was discussion of maybe someone paid the difference in upgrading those signs. I don't know the value of that or.
That's what I was waiting for.
But I.
That's ultimately.
I can't answer for them, but we'll see what they do.
I'm kind of, I'm supporting the chair here. I mean, can't we get more buying power if we combine with WCI and Bam All-in-One Shot?
I don't dictate what WCI does.
Is that what you're talking about?
Well, that's a good point, but I would like to make sure that the signs are uniform.
Yeah, yeah.
As far as shades and colors and type of lettering.
Well, today, we have a mix of signs out there. We have wood posts, we have steel posts, we have decorative posts. We have some signs that are framed, some that are unframed. We have some that are leaning, some are falling. Some are missing.
Are you getting good corporate, are you on good cooperative terms with WCI where you could join forces and do this together?
He just indicated the fact that he's not getting that communication.
Well, can we.
Well, I'm not getting an answer.
Well, that's, the communication is frivolous if you don't get the answer.
Well, how do we, how can we, how can we help to try and get WCI to the table and do something together?
As I've done, I've spoken to their development project manager. He might want to call David Caldwell.
Sure.
And help.
Whatever.
Add pressure. They have taken bids on their segment of roads, as Yvonne or Danny alluded to, that Ajax is their prime contractor. And they are evaluating that currently and negotiating that contract with their, with their contractor. So that's, as I know as of one o'clock today.
Well, I would volunteer to speak to David Caldwell unless you wanted to.
I'm calling.
Hmm?
I'm calling.
Okay, thank you.
May we, can we table this without interfering with your business for at least one minute?
I think that'll be fine, yes.
Just have one more question. Who has more signs, us or WCI, that need to be?
They, they have a lot more signs. They have two-thirds of the road network. We have one-third.
That's what I.
We have a resident who has his hand up. You gonna have something to tell us? You've done, you've done good work so far. Come up here and talk to us if you want, if you have something.
Quick question. I'll approach the podium, referencing the street signs. I know it's been tabled, but Bristol just put up all new street signs, not even a year and a half ago. Is that going to be taken down and re-put up through every community, or are we just talking entranceways?
We're just talking within the right-of-way of Griffin Drive.
Perfect, thank you.
We're not coming in your neighborhood.
For the record, it was Gary Mayer, thirteen-three Old Bristol Parkway.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you for the time.
If there's no objection, this item is tabled until the next meeting.
Great.
Thank you. Okay, what of staff reports? District Council? Tony, you wait?
Just nothing to report, sir.
Thank you. Without man, anything? Danny, do you have anything more for us?
For the record, Danny Nelson, district engineer. I have nothing other than I, my memory has come back to me, Ms. Weinberg. Lakes eighty-seven, one twenty-six, one twenty-one, ninety, and sixty-two are the next lakes.
I saw the list.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, I've got a couple things. First is the schedule for next year's meetings. Need to have this approved by the Board, two meetings a month, the first and third Thursday, like you currently have. And then we'll advertise these all at one time, which will save you money, not advertising it on a regular basis. If you've seen the list, if there's any dates that look like they would be in conflict. Other than that, we need approval to advertise this meeting schedule.
Motion, please.
I'm about to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, second. Any conversation? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Five zero.
The other thing that I wanted to share with you is just a update on the, I think I have everything there. This is an update on the Mr. De Servo and the efforts that we're currently going through. Monday and Tuesday, Mr. De Servo met with the staff, zeroed in on job functions so that they could be categorized and part of the description. This is a result of what he summarized at that time, and you see all these major categories, starting with September one. Scott will have a, time sheets, for lack of a better word, where the six individuals will all categorize their time and how much time they spend in it. Then Mr. De Servo will put this into a final report and bring it back to the Board in four months. This will go through the rest of the fiscal year.
What's MIS?
Management Information Systems.
And unless there's questions, the only other thing I had, in September, the second meeting, I won't be here, but I'll have Justin will be here filling in for me.
Do we have any, I don't have a, do we have anything specific on the agenda for that meeting?
Uh, let's see, that, I'm not sure when, Ivan, your report would be here in the first of September, the maintenance schedule. I think Stevens might have been the seventeenth. The first one, too?
Okay, no, there's nothing then that I would have.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, is that it?
Yes, sir.
Pam, do you have anything for us?
I just wanted to ask a question about the gateway sign when you're, just before you come into Stony Brook, right outside. Is there a reason that we don't plant any annuals over there?
Which signs? At Stony Brook, coming off eighty-two?
Yeah, coming off eighty-two. It's like, it's no flowers.
They're up in the, in front of the sign. They changed those out, I believe.
Oh, well, maybe they.
Around the whole semicircle?
Mm-hmm. Did they? In fact, I don't think I saw any.
The one on Griffin?
No, one on eighty-two. I'll look at it.
We had done that in the past, so.
Okay, I thought I, I took a picture of it, but I'll, I'll look at it.
Okay.
And, okay, that, and the other thing is totally different. Any advancement on this new employment, employee that we were looking at, that we were trying to fill that position for?
Phil, the other?
Uh, we have Phil, the.
Recreation.
Thank you. Maintenance recreation person, and he's been going through training, and it seems to be going very well. And I'll let Yvonne speak to the utility technician.
Okay.
We did a few more interviews. We have a good candidate that maybe we cannot afford either. But the third one, I believe that we can, I'm going to invite this third person to come here and spend a couple of hours with us, trying to get a little bit more feeling about his ability to do the work. And this is a person that will accept the salary within a reasonable range. And hopefully, he will be, he will be, I will bring it back to you guys if we decide to hire this person. He has good qualifications. We don't know the person, and we cannot get good reference, so the only way that I can know a little bit better is by spending some time with him.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Pam, is that it?
I'm done.
Margaret?
Yeah, I had one comment, and that's, I've been receiving comments from residents about the latest water bill. Of course, it was not, it was a different timeframe from what they'd previously been getting.
The latest what, I'm sorry?
The water bill. It was, it, when it came, it was a.
Longer, sixty days, yes.
Timeframe. And also, people seem to think that they got it, their due date was so quick from the time that they got it that they were concerned about whether late fees might be waived this time or not.
Yeah, it's going to be waived. Last time was, what happened was, there was a computer glitch or something like that, that all the information got lost. We had to call Zennar, and they came and solved the problem. And so we couldn't have the information on time to send the bill on time. So I believe that it took sixty-six or sixty-eight days rather than sixty. So, and that was a concern, you know, we cannot assess people late fee because it's our fault. So we are not going to assess, and the last bill either. We didn't assess any late fee to anybody. Because it was our fault.
That was the concern, because some people said they got their bills the same day it was due, which made it difficult to get down here and pay it.
Including myself.
Yeah. Thank you.
Gary? Rod?
Yes, thank you. Cal, there's a couple of things which I'm going to ask if you wouldn't mind having a look at. First of all, a simple request, the Royal Palm, we discussed it two weeks ago. We've got thirty-seven, thirty-seven, Scott, relocated Royal Palms, right?
Yes.
Thirty-seven. And it was a simple request to, some kind of a log that we, so we can be certain that they are being checked at least twice a week, or whatever is reasonable. And I haven't seen that log. Could somebody produce it?
Okay, I thought I sent it.
I haven't seen it. If you did, I didn't get it.
It probably went.
It really is not, I hope it's not burdensome, but it's, you know, we're talking about sixty thousand dollars with a relocation, and I, and we've had an enormous amount of rain, and that's great. But when the rain stops, I just want to make sure we're checking that irrigation. Al O'Donnell's responsible for it, but he's expecting some cooperation from the district and from Manscaped. So somebody tick in a little box with thirty-seven squares doesn't seem like a lot.
Okay.
The, the second thing is the aquogenics contract. Is Tony on the line?
Yes, sir.
Oh. Section three point zero two sets out a whole list of detailed specifications, what we expect aquogenics to do for us. And I'm not going to read them all, because there's a lot, but I'm going to read three or four. And it talks about photographic evidence being taken before and after treatment. It talks about the contractor notifying the district in writing of any bank erosion problems on a monthly basis. Talks about, is the contractor performing annual water testing at each lake and flowway. Talks about a scoring system for our ponds in Appendix B. Can you, can you take a look at that three point oh two and tell us whether they're actually following through on all these things?
That's three point oh two?
Yeah, I can look at that. I guess that's the question.
I'm asking, I'm asking, I'm, yeah, I'm asking.
As to whether or not we are getting those logs. And those were put in there for a specific reason, to ensure performance based upon prior experiences with other vendors.
Yeah, I'm asking Cal if he would follow through on that, Tony.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. On, with, this, two weeks ago, I mentioned that it would be nice to have a presentation from this floating littoral company, Beam Mats. They do these floating islands at Disney World and places like that. I know that you mentioned you have one at another C D D's somewhere in Collier County.
Yes.
I've spoken to the owners. This is, this is floating littoral mats in a pond where you have hydroponic filtration of nitrogen and phosphorus to long roots going down into the lake and the pond. And it's very successful, but I'm trying to go fix on costs and effectiveness and annual maintenance and stuff like that. The owner of Beam Mats is willing to come down to present to us on September seventeenth, if we can fit them in.
That's when you're not going to be here, right?
Yeah, I, I'm familiar with this hike.
I'm not opposed to learning almost anything new, however, the Board has had conversations on at least two occasions about the amount of littorals that we're going to have around the neighborhood. And as I recall, the last time it was on a split vote, we decided we were going to have a hundred percent littorals, which I presume meant along the banks. Are you really sure you want to get into that right now?
Well, what I'm trying to offer here is some creative alternatives. You don't necessarily have to have littorals on the lake bank. You can have them very effectively in the middle of the lake on a floating island. And I'm trying to think outside the box and. And I'm trying to think outside the box and see whether, see what other people have done.
Any board members have objections to, uh, booking of some floating littorals in the second meeting in September?
I think I'd like to have an idea of what kind of a cost differential we're talking about before we even have a complete presentation. If it's gonna be, uh, astronomically expensive, it seems like it would be a waste of our time, 'cause I don't know that we would consider doing it if it's gonna cost a lot more.
Rod said he's already talked to these people, right?
I have, but I... The one, uh, that we did in Collier County, uh, not Severn Trent, but, uh, it's the Be, Beemat and then, uh, Collier, uh, Lake Maintenance, uh, that group, they actually did the planning and installed it. That was, uh, a little over fifteen hundred dollars for a two-hundred-and-fifty square foot mat. So...
Repeat that again?
For a two-hundred-and-fifty square foot mat. I was hoping I could get it. I've, I've had a picture, I sent you a picture of the one they put in down there. And, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty square feet was a little over fifteen hundred dollars.
And I'm going to assume depending upon the size of the lake, you would want more than one mat, or else it would, wouldn't really be beneficial.
My point is, I don't think we can make any of these assumptions until we hear from the experts, and I was asking for half an hour of, of the board's time.
Uh, Gary, you have a, objection? Do you have any idea what the maintenance is?
Once a year, you have to drag this, um, this, uh, floating mat to the edge, take out the old littorals, put new ones in and take it back out, force in the blocks and cut down.
Who does it? They do?
Our maintenance contractor. But there is also, uh, they also have companies around here that would do it specially if we wanted to contract with them.
So, we'd have to renegotiate with our maintenance contractors to do that, I guess?
Either that or it'll be a special deal. But I, I don't wanna jump to assumptions on what all these costs are until we, we hear from these people.
Is there a way that they... I have a lot of littorals for fifteen hundred dollars. Yeah.
Just tell me yes or no.
Can we get some more information? Yeah, I think they can give you some, you can get some more financial information of what it would cost and the maintenance contract before we have a, a presentation. And then I think we'd be better suited to say whether we wanna...
Better prepared, yeah.
Yeah, move forward.
Is that okay?
Yeah, and how many mats you're looking at per lake, depending upon size.
As long as it doesn't hold up any of this lake bank maintenance, that's my only concern.
It shouldn't.
Get it done. Will, will you please try and get us some written information on that?
Yeah, I'll reach out to these guys and get them to do a pre-see, send it in advance, and then once we've reviewed it, then we can decide whether to have them here in person.
Perfect.
And last comment I wanna make, uh, Steven, you and I talked about this this week. In the, in our liabilities, we have six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars of residence deposits. Uh, that's, or goes back a long, long way. Uh, and just for instance, uh, I've been living in Gateway, uh, seventeen years and I put down two hundred dollars deposit. Uh, and it, and the whole idea is if you don't pay your water bill, you've got a deposit. But I've got seven, for example, I, and I'm sure a lot of other residents have got a good payment record. And I, and I think it, it's unethical to keep two hundred dollars for such a long time, particularly when we're getting into, uh, automated billing and automated payment. And I, and I, I think it's worth asking our district manager to take a run at this and, 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 s, give us some advice whether we really should be keeping this money for, for such a period of time, because when people leave, when people sell their home, not everybody is getting that, is claiming that money back. And then we go and charge another two hundred dollars for the next homeowner, so that there is, there is probably money sitting there that was never claimed. And I, I just think it needs looking at. This six-hundred-and-fifty thousand just seems to sit there and I think we should take a look at either giving it back to good-paying residents or, or make another decision.
We can certainly take a look at it and bring back the policy. I mean, that's up, you know, there certainly are a lot of ways of doing it when it comes